I'd like to welcome everyone to one of our quarterly councilors at large meetings. The four of us do this because, number one, we genuinely enjoy it. It's the best part of politics is getting out and talking with people and finding out what's on your mind. The second reason we do it is that we can't be everywhere in the city, so you're kind of our eyes and ears as to what are the issues that are important to you, what would you like us to focus on when we carry out our council duties. I'd like to thank Councilor Shirley Azak from Ward Seven for joining us tonight. And I'd like to thank Councilor Ann Borghardt in the back of the room for joining us. But I'd especially like to thank Sandy Proctor, who graciously -- she graciously said, "Absolutely, we'll be glad to host you." And I'd also like to thank Tom Tebow for extending an invitation to us to come up to BHA property. So I'm Councilor-at-Large Winthrop Farwell, please call me Win. And the first thing I'm going to do is introduce Councilor-at-Large Robert Sullivan, and he will introduce our council president.
First of all, I want to thank Sandy, I want to thank the Housing Authority, Tim Tebow, I mean, Tom Tebow, but more importantly, I want to thank each and every one of you, because this is your home, and you are inviting us into your home tonight. So I want to thank you, first of all, for coming down and to hear, you know, what we want to say, but more importantly, what you're going to say to us is really what the gist of this is. But again, I'm Bob Sullivan, I've served 14 years as a councilor-at-large in the city of Brockton, and it's really my privilege to be here tonight. And I told this story a couple of years ago to Sandy when I came here. My last name Sullivan, right? So Sullivan Towers, pretty easy, right, to remember? But my daughter Grace, at the time, she was only five, I said, "Honey, I gotta go, Daddy's gonna go to a campaign event tonight, it's a candidate's night." And she said, "Oh, where?" I said, "Honey, it's called Sullivan Towers." And she said, "We own a tower, Dad? We own a tower?" So I'm home, I'm home, this is my tower. But again, thank you so much, and I look forward to the night. These are always wonderful quarterly meetings, and it's my honor and privilege to announce my friend, my colleague, the council president, Moises Rodriguez.
Well, 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 let me see if I can screw up the microphone, too. I actually have a petition going to ask for signature so we can change the name of the tower to Rodriguez Tower. I don't think it's gonna pass. But anyways, as Bob said, you know, residents of this city have five councilors. You've got your ward council plus the four of us. A lot of times, we hear the ward councilors saying, "Oh, but that's in my ward, that's in my ward." And I say, "Well, you know, I hate to disappoint you, it's my ward, too." You know, so the reason why, and I think Bob started this several years ago, for us to have these meetings as well, we do them in the corners of the city, because we want to know what's going on in the city as well. I mean, we get phone calls like everybody else does, but a lot of times, it's a lot easier when you put face and names together, so we can do what we can to represent you. I was actually saying, I said something kiddingly, that this is not a campaign event. We're not here to campaign, at least, I don't know, maybe the three of us aren't here campaigning, but no, all of us, all of us that are here, we're not here campaigning. We're here because we truly want to hear from you, our constituents. Sometimes there's nothing we can do because it doesn't depend on us. We hear it all the time, how everybody wants their roads done. You know, we don't have the funds to do all the roads in the city. We'll try to do as many as we possibly can, but we wanted to make sure that your taxes aren't going way the heck up there. So we can't raise taxes, because we're all taxpayers as well, so we're gonna do it within our means. But the idea is to do it smartly. We need to make sure that we're spending the city resources in the right places. And I am pleased to announce that at least the four of us, and I know the other two councilors that are here as well, we've been, you know, slightly frugal in terms when it comes to dealing with the city finances. We see it as our own money, and we feel that it's important for us to do what we can to make sure that it doesn't get wasted.
What is the fiscal budget of Brockton?
Well, we're just in the process of accepting it. This year, it's gonna be about around $450 million, which is interesting, that when I first came into the council, which was about five and a half years ago, it was right around $400 million. So it's gone up to $450 million.
It's going down.
It keeps going up, it keeps going up, but we need to make sure that your dollars and cents, my dollars and cents are spent, are spent and spent in the right places, and that's what we are going to continue to do. We're gonna hold the administration accountable for every single dollar that comes down the pipeline. And I, too, want to just thank everybody for showing up, because it's important. You could be doing something else this evening, but you're here, listening to us, but we want to make sure that it doesn't come across as you are here listening to us, that we're here listening to you. Take some ideas and some thoughts of whatever you have to give us, to help us do our jobs a little bit better. But before I go, I just want to make sure that I leave one thing with you folks. Please continue to believe in our city. We have a great city, a misunderstood city. We don't do a very good job in promoting the good that we do in this city. We've got some great schools, great people living in the city, and I live in this city. I've been here since I was a teenager, I'll continue to live in this city because I believe in it, but I want to make sure that you two stay believing in our city. Because if you leave, then I'm stuck here by myself. And I don't want to, and I don't want to go through that stuff. I want to make sure that good people stay in our city to help our city move forward. And I'm gonna pass the microphone on to my colleague from the at-large group as well. This is Gene Bradley-Rantcourt. So please welcome our councilors, welcome. And remember, they said, "Two minutes, don't go beyond that."
Well, I'm glad Moises said "two minutes," because he's been talking for at least 20 minutes. Well, good evening, how you guys doing? Great, great. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Gene Bradley, the winner of court. Some people call me Gene, and some people call me Bradley, but I like to tell people, just call me the guy with the long last name, so that's easy enough. It is my distinguished privilege to be here, and whenever I'm coming to this town, I always think about one thing. It's how I'm gonna have an opportunity to talk to you one by one, and also to meet my good friend. I'm not gonna say her name because I did not ask. I used to work with at Crystal's Restaurant when I was working there as a boss boy. She's back there helping out. So my paramount goal has been to serve you, and I say this all the time, I work for you, I am your employee, you're my boss, and nobody else. And it could not be more, much easier for all of us to come together this evening to actually listen to you and find out, you know, some of your concern and ideas. And one of the things that I like about this group, as you can see, although I'm the youngest one, but we treat -- well, I am the youngest man, but it's okay. So I'm 28 now, but I'm about to be 29, so pretty soon. So it has been an honor for me to serve you, folks. Day one, I promise you that I was gonna do my best to making sure that I'm here. I just got back from Miami, just landed from Logan Airport, and I came straight here because I believe in you and I know that this was gonna happen. So here's what I can tell you. No matter what you hear, no matter what you say, I want you to believe in Brockton. Because this is your city, this is my city, and without you, without us, we won't be able to do what we think is best for Brockton. Eight years ago, I said it a lot, eight years ago, you opened this community to me. Eight years ago, you gave me a place to live. Eight years ago, you showed me love. I cannot give up on you, and I will never give up on you. So here's what I said. Moises said, "Do not leave," but I'm begging you not to go anywhere, because this is your place, there is nobody else better than Brockton. So for me, whenever I see each and every single one of you, it gives me a reason to wake up every single morning to do what I think is best for all of us, no matter what's going on. And I can tell you that. I will fight for you until the last breath, no matter what. Yes, I might be the youngest one, but let me tell you this. I will fight for you with every piece of me, because I believe in you, no matter what. So like, they already stated, we are here this evening to listen to your ideas, to listen to your concern, to listen to whatever you have to say. Because you know why? Because you have access to us. We are here in front of you, and you can talk to us about whatever you want. So let me just say this before I give the mic. We are your employee, I want you guys to understand that. You are our boss. When it's come down to your tax dollars, we will make sure that every single penny spent accordingly, no matter when and no matter where. Because we will not let anything pass by just for the sake of somebody special interest. And let me say this, too. I am a taxpayer, too, and I don't want my tax money to be wasted. But I know how much, especially you senior citizen, been working so hard to contribute to all of us, so someone like myself, who came from Haiti eight years ago, can actually make a life in this city. So I thank you guys for coming downstairs, because I know you could have just stayed upstairs, watched TV, enjoy yourself. I thank you for taking the time to come here. Because without you, we won't be able to do our job. We are here to listen to you, to pay very close attention to whatever you have to say, and we will apply it accordingly. So I can speak for all of my colleagues, because yes, some folks claim that this is my ward or whatever. We represent the entire city, and no matter what's going on, the south side, the north side, the west side, the east side, believe it or not, we are included. So thank you so much for coming downstairs. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us, telling you some of our stuff that we've been doing. So I believe you will have an opportunity to ask each and every single one of us a question that we will be able to give you the answer that you want. Not what you want to hear, but what we think is best for the city. Thank you, folks, and let's do it.
By the way, the reason we're sitting down is because we don't want to talk down to people. We want to be a part of the group, and especially for somebody like me who's a bit vertically enhanced, I don't like looking down on people. I don't, I don't think it's the right image. We're gonna spend a couple of minutes until probably seven o'clock, excuse me, talking about the different issues that are important to each of us, and then we're gonna go to questions and answers from all of you.
Can you guys give me a moment to send the emails?
It's on this, it's on the, it's already on the piece of paper, Ann. So we spent a lot of time, the city council did this past year and into last year, on marijuana. You're probably aware of the fact that the ballot question passed. Sometimes we were criticized for not moving quickly enough, but we spent a lot of time with Councilor Bob Sullivan, as chair of the ordinance committee, drilling down on what are the business regulations that would be appropriate for Brockton, and what would be the areas, the zoning areas or restrictions that we would want for our city. So those are in place. Interestingly enough, we have not had, and the city council is the licensing authority, we have not had anyone come through the Cannabis Control Commission in Boston, where you have to go first, and then come down to Brockton and apply for a license. So that's pending. I'm sure we're going to have some retail shops. We already have a couple of places up on West Chestnut Street that are involved in the medical marijuana business, but it will be something that is coming. It will yield some revenue to the city, how much we don't know, and it'll be interesting to see if all of the work that we did yields some benefits. Quickly, for me, I watch the city finances very carefully. I was on the police department in 1991, when 25% of the city's workforce was laid off, including 31 police officers and 35 firefighters, and I would never want to see us go through that again. It was absolutely devastating. We lost about 250 teachers, and Brockton really came very close to insolvency or bankruptcy. And were it not for help from our legislative delegation, we would not have been able to bounce back. But we did, and I don't ever want to see us going back to that, to that era. So I watch everything we spend, every recommendation that comes through, I try to research and find out, is it good policy, will it yield, will it be a return on our investment? Because all of you fund government, it's very interesting to sit up here. If you didn't pay your excise taxes, and your sales taxes, and your meals taxes, and whatever else you pay, we wouldn't have a city government, because that's where the money comes from. Even the state grants come from the taxes that people pay in this city. The lottery receipts come from the fact that people buy lottery tickets, and we get reimbursement from the, we get an allotment from the lottery commission. So we respect you as the people who actually make city government not only feasible, but make it work. Couple of other things before I pass it on to Bob Sullivan. Obviously, public safety and code enforcement. I genuinely would like to see the city cleaner. I would like to see us get to a point where I'm not going to go down some street and see junk cars and see streets that are littered with car parts, businesses that have too many cars outside their facility when in fact they're restricted. In other words, as Moises said, it's a great city, but we can improve it. We'll never be perfect, but we can improve upon it, and I think having a methodical and focused code enforcement program with statistics coming back to us, so we know that what we're funding works, or do we need more funding? In which case, we can request that the mayor perhaps put more funding into the police department for code enforcement, or the fire department. Schools, absolutely, it's important that we have the best possible education for our children. You know, all of us function because teachers took their time to teach us what we needed to know, and we can't take that for granted. So Brockton Public Schools do an outstanding job. Through all of the darkest hours in the city, the schools were always a bright light. And I want to make sure that they get the funding they need, we support, pardon me, the superintendent, and that we ensure that we provide our children with the best possible education we can afford. Streets, enough has been said about streets, we do need a methodical, careful analysis of what streets need to be done. You almost have to triage it and come up, I hope someday, with citywide in all of the different wards, what are the streets that deserve priority one, what are the streets that deserve priority two, what are the streets that are approaching a critical stage when we need to repair them? Because I don't want people driving their cars down through city streets, and you know, my dad used to say that a pint of cream would churn to butter in some streets. We don't want that. I mean, we want, we don't want people to have damage to their cars. For all of those reasons, we like to work together, we like to work with the ward councilors. And just on a personal note, you know, the thing that I like about the council is we're all different. We're different in terms of age groups, we're different in terms of background, we're different in terms of cultural backgrounds. We learn from each other. We may not even vote all the time the same way, but Shirley may say something, and I hate to admit it, but women --
I don't do it.
No, no, women have an insightful way of looking at things. If my wife is listening, she'll be pleased I acknowledge this. But they do, they have a way of looking at an issue that we men don't look at it. So she'll say something, I'll learn from it, Bob will say something, I'll learn from it, Moises will say something, Gene Bradley will say something, and then we try to blend all of the information together, and then we vote the way we think is in the best interest of the city. And however it comes out, it comes out. I always respect my colleagues and however they vote on an issue. So that's it for me. It's a pleasure and an honor to serve with all of the councilors, but especially with my three colleagues as councilors-at-large.
Thank you, thank you, Win. And State Representative Jerry Cassidy had texted me earlier when I was driving over here. They're in session tonight at the State House, there's a couple pending bills, so he won't join us tonight, Claire Cronin can't join us, Mike Brady and Michelle Dubois, they're all up at the State House, so I told Jerry I'd let you know. I mean, Win just did a really good synopsis and summary of, you know, what we're working on, what we're looking for. At the end of the day, you know, you have, like Moises said, you have five of us at any given time, right? There's seven wards, 28 precincts, there's 11 of us on the city council. We meet every single Monday night, the first and third, at seven o'clock, we sit as a finance committee meeting. And on the second and fourth Monday, we sit as full city council. I've served as the council president on three full years, and then I kind of helped Mr. Ian Ari last year as an acting. But a big role that Moises has done is designating committees. And Win said it, I mean, I chair the ordinance committee, and the ordinance committee is what makes the laws in the city of Brockton. For good or for bad, that's what we do. And, you know, marijuana was a hot issue last year, you know, we did our homework, we did it the right way, you know, some people weren't happy, and that's, that's fine, they don't have to. I'm not in office to make friends, it's to do the right thing. And at the end of the day, I know we did the right thing, and we'll see how that turns out. You know, I don't think it's gonna be the pot of gold under the rainbow, but again, we're optimistic and we'll see. Another issue that just came before us, and I'll let Moises and Gene talk about it, but you probably saw throughout the city, this scattering of signs, you know, "Stop Sanctuary City" and stuff like that. And we spent five meetings on this ordinance that my two colleagues and friends proposed. Sanctuary City is not what the proposal was, and I'll let them delve into it, but --
Oh, it's about cooperating with ICE.
Let me, let me finish, sir. I voted against it, and Tim Cruz voted against it, Tom Monahan voted against it, and Win voted against it last week as a subcommittee. Gene supported it, I mean, he authored it. But what I will say about it is, it violated federal law. There was a section there that did violate federal law. And as a lawyer, and listening to our lawyers, we can't support it. However, a lot of communication is being brought up, right? My parents, my grandparents came from Ireland to Brockton to work in the shoe factories, right? The city has always been a city of champions and immigrants, right? That's what it is. And that's really what the good thing of the city of Brockton is. And Win said it earlier, I mean, we have some really good people that serve on the city council. All different backgrounds, all different skill sets, you know, and we're trying to make a difference. And I think at the end of the day, we do make a difference. I will say --
That's spewing right now.
What's that?
I'm just aggravated with what you're saying, I just don't like what you're saying.
Well, tell me what you don't like. So tell me what you don't like, because that's --
Because what you're saying is not right.
It's not right.
We need to have immigration laws.
Right, ma'am, what I'm saying is what --
We need to enforce the immigration law.
And we don't need sanctuary cities, it's wrong.
What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say, though, what I'm trying to say, first of all, I voted against it, but it wasn't a sanctuary city proposal. But let me just make it clear, there was a component in there that violated federal law. You can't support it. A sanctuary city, the definition of a sanctuary city, I'm not for sanctuary cities, let me be clear about that. But what I'm trying to say is, if you look at the definition of sanctuary city, there can be no cooperation whatsoever with federal agencies. The problem I had with this proposal is that it did have a carve-out where you could not work with ICE. I don't agree with that, my colleagues didn't agree with it, and it was sent back unfavorable to the full council. That's one component that we're doing as an ordinance committee. I'm not spewing BS, I'm telling you what happened, that was factual, that's what happened. We don't have to agree, but I agree with you that it wasn't the right proposal, and my colleagues and I can disagree. So I'm not proposing what you said, it's BS. I'm telling you from my heart what it was, and as a lawyer, what it is.
Who proposed it?
These two gentlemen. So they, they can talk about it, but I'm just trying to tell you what we've been doing. The biggest thing coming down right now is gonna be the $450 million budget. When Chris McMillan, who's in the back, former Ward Seven councillor, and I got elected 14 years ago, the budget was a little over 200 million. So think about that, 14 years, how much it's escalated. We need to do cost containment measures, the city council has done that. The streetlights in the city of Brockton were bought for 43,000 bucks. We saved 650,000 year one, 550,000 year two. Then we did these streetlight LEDs. You drive around the city of Brockton now, it's clear, it's beautiful, it's also a crime deterrent. So these are things that we, as a legislative body, not the mayor, the mayor's the CEO, sits at the, sits at City Hall every day.
You just changed the subject.
Oh my God, why, you, you sound like you're campaigning us there right now.
I'm just trying to tell you information.
Why you, you are giving us information.
Right, about the streetlights.
But first of all, the tone of your voice is very, very angry, for some reason, my opinion only, and anybody else can try to, like true.
Condescending.
We're, yeah, thank you.
I'm not trying to be condescending, ma'am.
Excuse me, we're trying to listen to you.
Okay.
But you gotta tone it down, you sound like you're angry.
Well, I'm not angry, I'm deaf in this ear, so I'm sorry for my loud.
I'm deaf in my left ear.
I'm sorry for my loud, but I'm deaf to my right ear, so I do apologize.
I'm deaf in my left ear either. I do appreciate the fact that it's a $450 million budget, that's due to inflation in any city, okay? The streetlights are amazing, I love them, you guys caught them at a bargain basement price, and I am grateful for that, but you gotta tone it down. Not because you're deaf, but because --
I'm not deaf in both ears.
The way you're, you're talking to, the way I feel right now --
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let everybody else speak, and then we could just listen to questions, how's that? How's that? Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
You can call me Bob, I'm not a sir.
You're representative of the city council.
Okay. Anyways, I'm actually the guy that, that put in that ordinance.
I know.
Be nice, let him speak.
It is true. I don't know if you know this or not, but I'm an immigrant.
So am I.
And I came here for a petition process that my grandfather put in for my parents to come.
Really?
No, no, hold on, I'm just, you know what? There's a lot of rhetoric sometimes that we go through on a national level, and sometimes we carry that into -- it's interesting how everybody basically thinks that every single immigrant that came to this country can be illegal. That's not true. Ellis Island, Ellis --
It's 23, it's not illegal.
Let me, let me finish. I mean, is this gonna be one of these discussions, or you already have your mind made up and you're not gonna let me say anything?
Mine's made up.
You know, so, so, but you know, for the rest of the people that want to listen, I'm gonna tell you something. This whole notion that immigrants came here legally, there's only two ways you can come to this country legally. Two. Somebody has to petition for you to come, or you gotta marry somebody who's an American citizen.
Or you can apply for a --
You can't. You can't. That's not how it works. You know, when you hear, when you hear --
You can say it, but that's not how it works.
But you, when you hear the nonsense about, "Why don't just, why don't people just apply to become legal? Why don't they just come here legally?" Let me tell you something. If you have the option between coming to America illegally or coming to America legally, I can bet you both of my eyeballs that they would pick coming here legally. Because the nonsense that people put up with, and the way people are treated, just because they got that little label, is ridiculous. Now, this little immigrant guy that you're talking to, came here as a teenager. But you know what I did? I wore the uniform to defend this country. I served eight years in the United States Navy. You know, so when you, when you have people questioning my patriotism, and when I signed up to the Navy, I didn't do it because I was getting anything for free, because there was nothing free about the military. There's nothing free about serving your country.
We're not talking about you, we're talking about the --
No, 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 no. I am telling you, in Brockton, in Brockton, let me tell you something. In Brockton, the people that I, the people that I come from, I should say, or the people that I'm associated with, Cape Verdeans don't come to America illegally. You know what? They don't. There is no border that you climb over, or there's no fence that you jump over to come to America legally.
Mexico, Arizona, and California.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not the only immigrants.
You didn't say Mexico.
I'm not saying the, I'm not, I'm saying the people that you'd probably deal with, or people that you're surrounded with, my people, now I'm going to my people. My people come here the same way that the Irish came, the same way that the Italians came, the same way that the Germans came. That's how they come, through a process. They go to the council office, they file for a visa, they're given a visa, and they come. But those are the people, but those are the people that you deal with in this city. That's the people that you deal with in this city. But sometimes, what we're doing, we're taking the issues that are happening in California, in Arizona, in Texas, and we're bringing it to Massachusetts, because you know what? It sounds good. I mean, the nonsense that you see with signs that says, "No Sanctuary City," I, as an American defender of this country, as a veteran of this country, I don't want sanctuary cities either.
And why'd you propose?
I proposed an amendment, so that, an ordinance, so that victims of crime can get together and discuss crime with the police department without fear of them getting deported. Now, the nonsense is that nobody tells the truth anymore. We don't, it sounds so much better when we just say, "Hey, we don't want sanctuary cities", instead of diving into what the ordinance that was actually proposed. The ordinance didn't say criminal people don't get deported. The ordinance didn't say if you commit a crime in this city, you don't get deported. What the ordinance said is that if you're a victim of, what we don't want is people staying home, getting beat up. We have people in this city on a regular basis getting assaulted. People who are in construction, I know that for a fact, they get assaulted for doing the work that they're doing. People take advantage of their status and not pay them for the work that they're doing. Now, if you're okay with that, if you're okay with that, that's okay as well, because it's on you. But it's not okay with me, because if I claim to be a law-abiding citizen of this country, then it's all the laws. It can't just be pick and choose which laws you wanted to enforce. An assault on somebody is an assault. And you know furthermore, you see people who said, "Oh, but we want ICE to come in and do whatever they want." Now let me ask you something. Do you have any children?
No.
You don't have any children? But if you, let's say you had, you have nieces, nephews, somebody? If you have that, and I assault one of your people, one of your family members, do you want me to pay the price for my assault? Or do you want me just to get picked up by ICE and sent back to Portugal?
If you're here illegally-
No, 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 but listen.
If you're here illegally-
As a criminal, as a criminal, so you'd be okay with just me getting deported?
Just like the 141 who were picked up three days ago in New England.
The what?
The 141 illegal aliens.
No, no, but what I'm talking about is, do you want, it makes you feel better to know that ICE is running around picking up people and deporting people? But you don't care whether or not those people paid the price for the crime that they committed?
That's the law.
No.
Yes.
But you don't want them to pay the price? So if somebody murders a kid-
Watched our taxes paid for them to be in jail for their immigrants.
So you're telling me, so if, let me ask you something. If somebody from Italy comes to this country, commits a crime, you just want to deport them back to Italy?
That's right.
And that's it? No pay, don't pay the price? Don't, no, you can commit murder, so it's okay, you don't want them to pay for the murder that they committed, you just want them to get deported? I don't. As an American citizen, you commit a crime in this country, I want you to pay a price for it. And if we're law-abiding people, and this is what floors me, we claim that we're all for public safety, we want to make sure that, you know, people who, you know, commit crimes, pay for their crimes, but you're willing to let people off the hook when they're illegal immigrants? Because, let me tell you something, not everybody, I was in Cape Verde about a month and a half or so ago that I went with a group of people from the city, that we built a church in one of the mountains up there, a Catholic church. And I saw a couple kids that were deported. And you know what? They were living better than I was. They were. So what's their, where's their punishment? My whole thing is, I'm not against ICE doing their job. You are a criminal, alien, you committed a crime, I want you to go to jail. I don't want you to get out, you know, get out of jail free and get put on the plane and sent back so that I can feel better about illegal immigrants. I don't. I want to see somebody, if you commit a crime, to pay for your crime here, and then we can deport you. But people are using ICE, people are using ICE as a way of dealing with crime. That's not their function. I want the Brockton police to arrest somebody that committed a crime? I want the state police to do the same thing? I want the FBI, DEA, and the martial services, all those agencies, to do their job and enforce criminal law? Once you enforce criminal law, if the person is here illegally, or on a visa, or whatever the deal is, once you pay your price, then you can get deported. But I don't want it to be used as a tool for people. Think about it. You come from, you come from France. If they know that you can just come in and take out somebody, you can just take out that person and say, "No, no, get ICE, get ICE, I want ICE, I want ICE", so I can get deported, and you're satisfied with that? And then you claim that you're all for public safety, and you want crime enforcement, and you want the police to do their job? That's nonsense. You know? It sounds nice on TV when you hear people saying, "Let's build a wall, let's build this, let's do that", but you know what? That doesn't fight crime. Crime fighting is fought in the streets by law enforcement. And by the way, you want to hear something shocking? Immigration law is not criminal law. Immigration law is not criminal law. It's a civil matter. That's why they have their own courts set up, their own agents set up, and they deal with those issues as they come. Criminal law is fought by criminal law enforcement agencies, like the FBI, like the Brockton police, like the state police. ICE is not a law enforcement agency that enforces crime in America. They enforce immigration laws, which are civil laws. It's almost like when you go to Walmart, you know, at 9:55, and you overstay beyond the closing of the store? They can't call the police and have you arrested because you're in the store after closing hours?
They can have you thrown out of the store.
They can throw you out, but they can't arrest you. Because you know what? You went in when the door was open, you overstayed beyond the closing hour.
Our door is open, let's close it.
You're gonna be able to do that? Do you know that the 19 people that caused 9/11 to happen, one of the worst incidences in our country, didn't come here through the borders and the southern border? They came here through a visa process. And those people continue to come, no matter how big of a wall you build. The idea is to develop intelligence in the country itself, so we can all keep an eye out, make sure that we keep the illegal people and the bad people out. That's what we need to do.
Such a huge issue, how many illegal immigrants live in the city?
God knows.
But I think, I mean, you know, this is something that, you know-
How much fiscal money goes to illegal people in Brockton?
Nothing.
Zero. And I'm telling you that, zero.
Because you know what it is? This is another nonsense that we hear nationally. Do you know that in order for you to come to this country and get food stamps, you have to be legally in the United States for five years? Whoever's telling you otherwise is full of it. In order for you to get food stamps, you have to be here legally for five years. No illegal person in this country gets money from welfare or food stamps.
Housing?
No illegal person, housing as well. There are children who are American citizens, mate, but the illegal person doesn't get housing, doesn't get food stamps, doesn't get money from anybody. So if those people are selling you that, and you're willing to buy it, you're willing to buy it, good for you. But I'm telling you the truth, the fact is-
The state budget said 1.8 billion goes to illegal aliens in the state of Brooklyn.
That's nonsense. That is nonsense. I don't know where you're getting those numbers from, but that's nonsense. But the idea is that, I just wanted, I just rattled off some things for you, so that you know. Again, I'm not here to change your mind, or, you know, you want to build a wall that's 40 feet high? Build one that's 80 feet high. Build one that's 100 feet high.
Why, they come by plane, right?
But, no, but you know what? That's the nonsense that we talk about. The people, again, that did us harm on 9/11 did not climb a fence. They came through the airports with carts picking them up and doing the things that they are, and they'll continue to do that, because they come in through a visa process. You want to deal with the immigration issue? That's what we have to deal with. Not necessarily the nonsense that you hear in the news all the time. Because the people that are climbing the fence or coming through the southern border, they're coming in looking to pick our potatoes and do the fieldwork that are being done in California, Texas, and Arizona.
How many illegal aliens collect some form of welcome?
Well, you know what? If you believe that, no matter what I just said to you, I'm telling you what the numbers are and what statistics are. And if you believe in that, I can't convince you otherwise. I can't convince you otherwise.
Okay, so, well, I would like to thank you.
Yes, I have a question. In other words, what you're saying, we would detain the criminal, send him to jail, and then after his term is done, we would send him-
What I'm saying to you is, that's what I want to do. That, if somebody harms my child, if somebody hurts-
Well, who's paying for that? We're paying for that. Why not just send him away?
So you don't want justice for my kid?
I want justice for who's done, who's been done wrong.
What's the justice for my kid?
It is justice.
If he harms-
If he's not here-
Just kick, just send him back to France, is justice?
He's no good, why should he be here?
But send him back to France is justice for you?
Yes.
Really? It's not for me? As an American citizen, as a veteran of this country, it's not justice for me?
But he isn't a citizen.
I want him to go to jail, and once he gets his time down, then get him out of the country.
Who's paying for it while we're in jail?
The same way that everybody gets paid in jail? You commit a crime in this country, you should go to jail.
But you know what? That's not, and I'll tell you another thing. Refugees get everything from the day they come here. They get food stamps, they get housing, they even get social security, when they haven't even worked a day of their life in this country.
Okay, I'm gonna say something about what you just said. And of course, I would like to go back to immigration. Well, we probably just met, but here's what I would like you to know personally. I myself worked for the state for about six years. And I myself been a US citizen for two years. And look at me now. I'm serving you because of what you've been doing.
But you're legal.
No, 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 let me just finish my point. I came in this country, yes, legally, by virtue of my dad in 2010. And when I came here, I came with my green card. And the green card is a possibility by the US government that allows you to come here.
Right, that's fine.
If you are under, can I just finish? If you are under 18, by virtue of your mom or dad, or whomever is bringing you to this country, you can be a US citizen automatically. But your parents must be a US citizen before that age. But once you pass 18, go into 19, you're gonna have to do it on your own. So when it's come down to undocumented people taking advantage of our, I gotta stand up to say this. When it's come down to undocumented people taking advantage of us, I can tell you that straight, that's not true. I work for Senator, I work for State Rep Brady as a legislative aide. I work for State Senator Michael Brady as the Director of Constituent Services. My job was to actually work in collaboration with different agencies to help his constituent, the second Plymouth and Bristol District. I can tell you that for my four years working for State Senator Michael Brady, I cannot count on my hands one person who's undocumented that called the office looking for help. I'm gonna tell you why they can't. In order for you to be qualified for those kind of services, number one, you must have a social security number. Undocumented people, I'm telling you what I've done.
I know from firsthand experience.
Well, I know, but I'm just telling you, I quit the job, I quit the job for a special, I quit the job, I believe it was April 3rd for a reason, I'm not gonna mention it here, because I think that's not what I'm doing now. I quit the job solely to focus on a different venue. But I'm telling you, I was in charge of this part of Senator Brady's office. And the folks that called the office are folks that were born here, or either came here legally, know the system, and they know how to use the system. The undocumented people are unqualified, not just for food stamps, or myself, or whatever you wanna call it, even for student loan. Ma'am, I'm helping you out.
All right, I'm listening.
The thing is that, without having a social security, because I'm gonna talk about immigration, because I went through it myself. So in order for them to be qualified for this kind of service, I myself, let's say that somebody called for food stamps, right? The first thing I ask, what is your social security number? That's number one. If it's a no, done deal. The number two question, what is your date of birth? That's number two. Number three, where do you live? That's what I was doing for four years. The reason I said that is because when you call DTA, Department of Transitional Assistance, they want this information in order for them to log it into the system. If you don't have that, you cannot receive anything. But here's where it's tricky though. If you came here undocumented, I do not believe anybody came here illegally. There's no such thing like that, and I said it. Unless you are Native American, you can tell me a different story, but that's a telephone at a time. But what I would like you to understand is that, by virtue, it's so funny though, now we're talking about immigration, because immigration is not our responsibility. The folks in Washington DC should have done that for you. But you know why? You are us here, because we are willing to listen to you, to serve you. And I said it earlier, I am your employer, you my boss, I work for you. You can talk to me whenever you want. As you can see, our cell phone, I hear on that piece of paper, you can call us at any given time now. So let's go back to undocumented people. If somebody came here undocumented, so, that's okay. If somebody came here undocumented, they have kids here, their children automatically become US citizens. Their children is able to receive any kind of benefits that this country can offer. Either my kids, or somebody else's kids. By virtue of their child, they will be able to benefit from that, from that aid. Either food stamps, myself, and they don't just give it to you. You must be qualified for it, in terms of like, how much money you make. Let me tell you, I was working at Crystal's Restaurant myself, I was going to Massachusetts. I'm telling you a story that I went through. And like I said, I've been a US citizen for two years, and I've been in America for eight years. So when I was working at Crystal's Restaurant, I was making $15,000 a year. I would like you to pay close attention, because I see that you wanna learn and you wanna know something. As I was going to Massachusetts, I work with Corinne over there, she knows it, I was doing buzzboy. I was unqualified, because the government stated that, because I made $15,000, I couldn't receive any money to go to school. So I ended up taking a loan for Massachusetts Community College for $10,000. So I am a, I came here legally, I got my little green card and everything, but I know people that are here undocumented, they would love to receive loan from school. They can't, because you must have that piece of document which designed by the US government. Immigration is not a local issue, it's not a state issue in terms of like, us having the power to determine. The folks in Washington DC should be able to talk about it, but we do talk to them. And when we talk to them, we report to them your frustration. What I would like you guys to understand is that, there are so many people out there talking about immigration. Immigration is so complex, because the thing is that, in order for even myself to become a US citizen, I had to study, I had to take a test, and you have to pass the exam, and determine whether or not you don't have anything stupid on your background, because you must pass that. So we're not gonna take this evening to talk about immigration, because that's not why we are here. We are here to serve you, we are here to talk about what's going on in the City of Brockton. To this gentleman back there, here's what I would like you to understand. That sanctuary city thing, I was a center of it, because somebody made a statement, March 28, 2019, for a special reason. And he or she knew why they did it. And here's the thing, the paramount goal of this ordinance, although we disagree at a certain level, that's why you voted for us, because we have to be able to talk and also see things differently. Just imagine ICE saying the same way Wen says it, the same way Bob says it, the same way Moses says it. This government would have been meaningless. But what I would like you to understand is that, the paramount goal of this piece of legislation was to bring a sense of trust and confidence among all of us. Let me tell you why. In Massachusetts, there's this saying, "If you see something, say something." Here's what I would like you to understand about criminal justice. I studied criminal law in college. When somebody doesn't trust you, understand that. If somebody does not trust you, they will not share any information with you. And you cannot possibly live in a society that functions like that. And as we speak, we know that you are people, especially women, who are facing domestic violence in this city, being abused because they know that, they are undocumented. And you know what's so funny? The folks who are abusing them, saying that, if you do pick up the phone, call 911, you will be deported. So by bringing fear to their mindset, they are unwilling to do so. This was exactly what Moses and myself, and I think all of us, would like to accomplish. We would like to give them a sense of belonging and being able to pick up the phone at any given time, report crimes regardless of what it is. I couldn't care less, I can tell you that, I am a US citizen, like you are. Whether you were born here, or I was born in Haiti. The same flag you raise, the same food you eat, we eat, the same thing. But what I will never tell you is that, I'm not gonna just sit here and telling you that I was gonna think otherwise. That ordinance, I was proud to support it. The folks that call it, whatever they call it, is just a political tactics to build on a foundation to determine what's going on. Sir, I'm not gonna keep on talking about this, you can talk to me afterward, I'll be more than happy to sit down and talk to you. Us do not believe in bringing criminals, murderers, or folks who are doing bad things to this place. We are not. How could you possibly think about someone like myself? You opened the door for me eight years ago, and now I would have the courage to welcome bad people to hurt you? This is common sense. And like I said, the paramount goal was to bring a sense of safetyness among all of us. And I am a member of a task force that was created by DA Cruz. It calls Operation Street Safety Community. What we're doing this, we talk about, what are the ways in which we can possibly bring folks like you together to talk about helping our community, my community, your community? But people will make you think otherwise. They will tell you that, that we are trying to bring criminals and all that nonsense. So I would be more than happy to talk to you after this, because you can see, immigration is very sensitive. Let's talk about-
Counselors, counselors, and people, we shouldn't be talking about a national issue. We need to talk about some Brockton issues, okay?
Yeah. So, so listen, it's 7:30, that's why we're here. I do want to recognize two people, Dennis Ian Ari from Ward 3, the dean of the council's here, and Steve Hook, who's the Brockton Emergency Management Association Director. But that's, again, at 7:30, it's an issue, but the mic's open, let's talk.
Hi, good evening, counselors. I just have a couple of questions. One is, I have a friend that's having an issue with a cemetery in Brockton. One is, I have a friend that's having an issue with a cemetery in Brockton. I've been made aware of the fact that it isn't, I've been made aware that there's an issue, I've been wait.
It doesn't project.
Okay. Don't yell at me. I'm doing the best I can. Cemetery issue, yes. There is a cemetery in Brockton, apparently it is owned by, can you help me the name of the people again?
Saint Patrick's Church.
Saint Patrick's Church?
Calvary.
Calvary. Has, does it or does it not get patrolled by our, patrolled at all? Is the city responsible in any way, shape, or form for security in that facility there?
They drive through that cemetery.
Okay, because my friend went there to visit her mother, who's rest in peace, and found several people committing sex acts there. Other people were doing drugs there. And somebody buried a dead cat over her mother's grave. Right hand to God, people. She, she couldn't be here tonight to speak on, I mean, it's making me emotional because who does that? Who goes into a cemetery and buries a cat over someone's mother's, anyone's grave, not even someone's mother? You know? I wanna thank you for the streetlights, I love the streetlights. I could use a sweep on Fuller Street, a street sweeper. Can I get a sweep, a street?
Yeah.
I can't say it. That would, Fuller, can I get a sweep?
Yeah.
Ms. Borogod, can I get a sweeper?
Kingman Ave.
She's not here. Kingman Ave, I'm sorry, Kingman Ave.
Kingman.
Kingman.
On the left side of the city.
That's my side. East side's best side, don't you know? Thank you.
By the way, if, if someone has an issue like that, please, A, contact your Ward Counselor and B, put a, see, click, fix.
What's that new gentleman that makes a lot of money at the police station? Can I contact him?
They're all blue. They're all blue. Which one you talking about? They're in New Orleans. They're in New Orleans.
Yes.
Is this one person from the police department?
I can contact him about this?
Yeah, and he can pass it on to the police chief.
Thank you.
You know, I was thinking tonight, are we gonna have any interesting topics? Boy, was I, uh.
You know Natalie, nothing is a good one. Your mom is right.
Uh, go ahead, Dave.
Uh, recreational marijuana. The Cannabis Commission, two and a half months ago, stated that coffee shops, they'll have their ordinances in place by the end of July. I was wondering if the City Councils, if the Ordinance Committee plans on putting some ordinances in place prior to then so we don't have to put a moratorium in place again.
Well, it's, it.
We've done, we've, well, that, that's the other part that Massachusetts voted on. We voted on recreational dispensaries, grow ops, and coffee shops. That's where you come right into the shop and you consume in the shop. Massachusetts voted in favor of that, and Brockton did as well.
Yeah.
So, if, where we've already put so many ordinances in place, it seems as though if we only like have left is, um, locations, the zoning, maybe the times, noise control or something, it's probably two, three, maybe four ordinances plus all the other ones, and I think we could have it wrapped up in two or three meetings.
I, I'm just gonna speak personally, I'll let the, my colleagues speak. I'd kinda like to get the marijuana business rolled out to see what effect it's gonna have on the city, see what resources might be required from the police, for example, for traffic control or compliance, and before I embraced the next tier or the next level of marijuana, uh, because eventually I understand there're gonna be marijuana bars where you can actually go in and.
That's the coffee shop.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'd, I'd like to try to find out where we are before I jump to the next level, but that's just my opinion, I don't know about my colleagues.
Well, they've, they've already been approved in Nevada, in Las Vegas, they'll be opening them soon. So maybe we can like research what goes on there, the way we did Colorado and California.
The only, and I'm not against it, I'm not for it. The only thing I would say is, I, I, again, speaking personally, I want the public safety resources in place to take care of our current residents and businesses before I expand on what might be required of the police. We, what Patricia Wright mentioned about Cavalry Cemetery, there needs to be a more proactive and a more visible police presence in the city. We probably don't have it because we're suffering reduced manpower, our person power now because we have men and women on the police department, but embracing this new, again, marijuana industry and all that it may have to offer, I really wanna get some other things, again, my personal opinion, get some other things in place, take care of our residents, make sure we have proactive patrols, preventative patrols, and then take a look at what the next issue might be. So, I, I can let anyone else comment that may want to.
No, I mean, I think just Win summed it up. We also, the, the city of Brockton has their own attorney, right? The city solicitor's office, but under the charter, the city council, we also have our own attorney, Attorney Shannon Resnick, our legislative counsel. She's the one that helps us when we move through the process. So, we'll talk to her about it as well, but I, I echo the sentiments of Win.
Yeah, I do as well, but I just wanted to make sure you understand, we understand that the licensing authority for anything cannabis in the city is the city council. So, this, the reason why we did this when we were discussing the ordinance is that we wanted to make it as clear as, as it could be, so that everybody, the citizens have a say in what happens. Uh, so, my whole thing is that, you know, you've got absolutely nothing to worry about in terms of where these things are gonna go or how it's gonna go, because it's gonna be a transparent process, it's gonna be, it's gonna be as clear as clear it can be, and we're gonna make the decision that's best for the city together in a sense, you know? I know it's a little, you know, catchy in the sense when we say we're gonna do it together, but in this case, we're gonna do it together, you know, because we wanted to make sure that the taxpayers and the residents of the city had a say in what happens with, with the cannabis in Brockton, and that's why we are probably one of the very, I don't think there's a single community in Massachusetts that actually has the council, the city council, as the licensing authority. And I'm talking about the cities, not the, not the small towns. But as far as the city is concerned, and I've kinda done, I've done some digging and I, I actually haven't found one, so we're, we're basically a trendsetter in, in the sense that we're setting this thing up in a way that the taxpayers and the residents have a say in what these shops are gonna go, no matter how it's gonna be, so. But that's gonna, that's, that's actually a process down the road, and, and I think as Win was saying, you know, we're gonna focus on the six that we have to license within, you know, as they become available, uh, but the rest of the process, we're gonna, we're gonna cross that bridge when we get to it.
I was just asking from a business perspective, because the question's already coming up, and do you plan, is this, should we be ready in four months, or should we be ready in a year and four months? Or is the council, so if you, you are planning on putting a moratorium in place, it'll be at least six months after July?
I can't, I can't speak for my colleagues, my colleagues to be honest with you, but I see that as being an issue, a, a, a thing that we're gonna do, because there's no way we're gonna go from one process into, into a next process.
Brand new council.
You know, it's a brand new council in, in January, but as far as, if I, if I get lucky enough to get reelected, you know, uh, that's something that I would look forward to in putting a, a stop to it so that we basically can, you know, cross the T and dot the I's like we did with the other, with the, with the retail marijuana.
Thank you.
Well, David, I would like to thank you for taking the time actually to ask this question. So, I mean, as you know, it's like, I, I believe like, of course, uh, you know, I, I strongly believe in transparency, and also, I, I also know that, you know, a government without a sense of transparency, transparency, it's like a bird without wings. So what I can tell you is that, um, I will make sure that we do everything that we could possibly do accordingly, and to making sure, you know, something like that move forward. But as you know, we have to take the time to do the research, to come up with the best possibility of approaching it, because although someone else is doing it, doesn't mean we have to do it the same way. But what I can tell you, this is something that I know is very sensitive, and you've been very passionately about that, but I will do anything that I could possibly do with my colleagues to making sure that when that issue does come to life, to see what we can do accordingly, and hopefully you business people will come down to open your little business and bring revenue to Brockton, because that's one thing that we gotta talk about. What are the ways in which you can actually bring money here? And I wanna bring business in Brockton. But as you know, it's a very sensitive issue, and you see what I did with, you know, recreational marijuana, I think I wouldn't change my mind, but let's see what happens, you know, we have to be more educated about that, and then we will make the best decision when that moment comes.
Thank you. First of all, I wanna say thank you guys for holding this forum for us today. Changing the subject just a, a little bit here. Recently, when I, when I sat on the planning board and the zoning board, I voted against the Irving Oil Gas Station is going on the intersection there at Reynolds Parkway and West Street and Pleasant Street.
Mm-hmm.
Which is gonna be a major development, um, at one of the worst intersections right now in our city and probably in the state. Now, I heard that that has been approved, okay? Are you guys concerned about that? Because I know when I was sitting on the board, the study that they did, the traffic study that they did, was done during May and June, okay, um, at that time there, but they never did, did that study during, from Thanksgiving through the Christmas holiday, when you can barely get through that intersection because of all the, you know, that there, I mean, it's actually, if an ambulance tried to get there, through there to go to Good Samaritan, it's gonna have a hard time. And on top of that, I'm hearing that there's going to be a development going across the street there, where a couple of times we were trying to put a restaurant in there, Strip Plaza or whatever, with a little white realtor, um, the building is. Do, do you know what's going on with that? If that's gonna come to, and what are your concerns about that intersection being as congested as it's going to be?
I mean, you know, Gary, uh, thank you again for asking this question. So public safety is something that I, that I take deep to my heart, but I, I do know that intersection, and of course, I believe it was, if I'm not mistaken, in two thousand and fifteen or sixteen, it was voted on as one of the most dangerous intersection in Massachusetts.
Correct.
And I'm assuming that, you know, if they're gonna build that, not if, when they build that gas station, um, they're gonna have engineers that will redesign not just the gas stations, but the entire platform, in terms of like the traffic comes in, the traffic going out. So this is something that I'm assuming that they will.
Well, the only, not to cut you off, Gene.
Go ahead.
The only thing that they said they were going to do is they're going to add, coming from the west side there on Pleasant Street, they were gonna add a turning lane to go onto Reynolds Parkway, um, which will hold three cars. Three cars for one isn't enough, okay? And they can't really go more than that. At the same time, traffic flies down Reynolds Parkway, if you ever seen it during rush hour, you know, it just, any day of the week when people are coming home from work from four o'clock on, the turning, the turning lane going into the mall, okay, is so backed up that it's now past the turning lane and it's back out to taking up one of the other two lanes at this point here. So, cars have one lane to come down, and then they're gonna come, so now this congest, this is gonna be so congested that you're gonna have everyone now cutting through the gas station and going through all the side streets over there off of Pleasant Street to come back out to West Street to bypass it. And, like I said, I voted against that project even though it was voted in favor of because of that concern. And I don't see any other way that it's going to happen. So the traffic study was already done, and all they're adding is a, a, a third turning lane at that point there. So, I mean, um, I think, I think a bad, a dangerous intersection just got much, much worse, you know? And then there's talk about building something on the other side there, which is going to add to even a lot more congestion there. I think it's a bad project.
I mean, you know, even as we speak, I mean, if you are driving down from Pleasant, cross West Street in that small highway, you cannot take a left. And this is something that I do know, it's kinda like very crazy, because there is no light to take a left.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to wait for that, um, traffic coming up to try to fix it. I mean, I think, not just us, but I do believe Senator Brady, State Rep Claire Corning, Jerry Cassie, and Michelle brought that issue to DOT, I was part of that meeting. So this is something that I think they are working on. I cannot tell you at what stage they are now, but I do know that it is a very dangerous city. As you know, I live up there.
Right.
So, if you are going down from, if you are going down from Pleasant Street, you cannot take that left.
You can't make that left.
You're gonna have to wait for the car coming up from Pleasant Street to do it. So, I mean, I truly appreciate your concern, and I do think that my colleagues will express their own feelings, but it is a concern to me.
Yeah. I just think it needs a little bit more, I don't know if it's passed already, you know, that.
It has been passed to where it's gonna go.
I know.
In fact, we just voted on it on Monday.
Right, I know that's gonna go, but, I'm talking about the traffic.
I, I understand that, but you know what, Gary? There's one thing I, and I bring this up a lot of times when we are getting together in public safety and some of the other committees that we sit on, we live in a city of a hundred thousand plus people. And with a hundred thousand plus people, one thing you can expect is traffic. And sometimes traffic is good. Controlled chaos as far as traffic is concerned is a good thing. It shows that the city is actually developing. People are interested in coming to our city, people are shopping in our city. Um, I, I know it doesn't, it's not politically correct to say, but in order for us to develop as a city, and we are the only city in the county, we're not Yvonne, we're not the Bridgewater's, we're the city of Brockton. Cities like Brockton have traffic, and we're gonna continue to have traffic until the city ceases to exist, which I hope it never does, but we're gonna, we're gonna have that, but we're gonna be realistic, because a lot of times, sometimes when we play the political game and we're gonna stop traffic, we're gonna, you know, eliminate all the traffic, we're not being realistic. We're not being realistic, and a lot of times we're playing with people's emotions, and it's not something that's good for a city. And we need to develop the city to make sure that, you know, we, we can't continue to crank up the taxes on the, on the rate play, I mean, the taxpayers in this community. We need business to develop and business to bring, uh, resources into this community. I know it's not the, the most politically correct thing to say, but you know what? I can live with a little traffic knowing that my taxes aren't going too far up. You know, it's something that we do. I go into Boston and you spend a day in Boston just to go one block. It's a good thing, nobody, you know, i- in Brockton, we complain, we hear people complaining about, ah, there's no parking, there's no parking, there's no parking. You go into Boston, you park ten miles away, and you're expected to walk to where you're going. In Brockton, everybody wants to park around City Hall, everybody wants to park around this building. We don't wanna walk, you know, it's not the right thing to do in a city. You know, in cities, unfortunately, there's issues that come along with the city. You know, with all due respect to people sometimes that say, I don't want traffic, I don't want people, I don't want noise, I don't, I'm sorry, folks, those things come along with the city. I love my city, and I don't mind putting up with a little traffic so as long as it's controlled traffic.
I just wanna say, I'm not against the project, I'm just concerned with the.
Just, just for the benefit of people that might see this at home, it went through technical review, it borders Ward One and Ward Seven. Counselor Azak worked on this extensively, there have been improvements, Mass DOT was involved, they did reach some accommodation with Saint Paul's Church, which I believe owns property contiguous to where this will go. The fire department signed off on the underground storage tanks, I don't believe they'd do so if they were at all concerned with public safety. So, um, that intersection always should be watched in terms of enforcement, people blowing the light, making illegal turns, but I do have to compliment the Ward Counselors, Tim Cruz and Shirley Azak, and the, and the city administration for really drilling down on the issues that that, that, that particular project presented. So, with that said, let's go on to another question. I'm not trying to hurry, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. My name is Cindy Etheracoska, I'm a resident of Ward Five. And my first thing I'd like to bring up is historic preservation in Brockton. We have a historic, um, society here in the city, they work really hard, but I think that Brockton itself needs to work harder on some of the historic preservation of some of our buildings. We have lost so many in the city, and we learn from our history. Just last week, the former Hotel Grayson was hit by a car, there was a fire. It's my understanding that the city owns that building, and I'd like to know what the city is going to do to preserve that building, so that hopefully someone will come in and turn it into something, so that we don't lose another historic building, as well as the building that sits directly across from it on Frederick Douglass Avenue. It's been painted purple, it's unsightly, and it really needs to have something done with that. And we also, our historic, um, commission in the city is not in place, and I think that it needs to be. I really would like to see the city council, um, become quite active in that, and getting people on that commission that are going to work on the buildings in the city to preserve them. What I would like to see is some type of a checklist, so that when someone owns a property in the city, they come to the building department, they may wanna put new windows in or, or vinyl siding. I think there needs to be some type of a checklist if the building is over a certain age, it needs to be evaluated before it's granted, um, to have changes made to it, to make sure it does stay within any historic parameters that it may come under. And then my next thing, and then I'll let you speak, is homelessness downtown and the, the drug use. There, um, I know that we have the police department that is doing a great job through community policing downtown, but I would like to see it in later hours. policing downtown, but I would like to see it in later hours. 11, 12, midnight, 2:00 AM, there's a lot of activity going on. And I personally do not see the police able to stop, and really like, you know, be able to park, put their windows down, to listen to what's going on. I know they drive around, but unless you're hearing some of it, because things are happening behind buildings, I'd like to see that addressed as well. Thank you.
Okay. Just, for my part, very quickly, we do have a historic, pardon me, historic commission, that requires appointments by the mayor. When they are, when the appointees are submitted to us, we do vote on approving them. Homelessness, and actually, police patrols. I'm just gonna say this, we are not in charge of the day-to-day operation of city government, nor should we be. We are legislative, we are policymaking, the mayor and the various department heads are in charge of what goes on. So, any one of us can call and request something, we can't require it. We can say we need more police patrols down in Ward 5, or because of the activity at 11:12, 2:00 AM in the morning, but we can't, we can't require it.
No, I understand that.
So, so what we need is a more proactive approach to these issues. I mean, there should be a laundry list of areas, and we do have a crime statistician, we have a crime analyst. So, the information that she feeds to the police department should go out to the patrol division, so that you know where offenses are happening, what time of day, and what day of the week, and then you should gear your police patrols to where obviously you have high activity. We don't get those crime reports, I've never seen one yet, and I'm not gonna launch into, I'm not gonna launch into that tonight. We need to do a better job, and we need the appointments to the historic commission. That's, that's my two cents worth.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Good evening. I wanna thank you all for holding this meeting, too, for the citizens for coming out and speaking up as residents. My name is Jimmy Pereira, resident of Ward 7. In respect to everyone's time, I'm just gonna talk about two things. I'd like to thank everyone for the topics that they did bring up, those are things that were on my mind as well. But, one thing that we've seen is road construction, potholes that continue to be in the city. Something that I'd like to see, I've brought it up before, but looking at the pavement management system, I know it's something that does exist, but looking at how we can improve that, one solution I would think would be the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, or creating a Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I know some things are not in the city council's power, some is delegated to the mayor as well, but having that conversation, moving some of those things forward. I'm a father of two children who like to bike in the city, so I make sure that, you know, I don't let go of their handlebars when I'm walking down Warren Avenue, and there are people speeding. We haven't had any progressive type of traffic calming devices here in the city. You see the Hawk beacons on Montello, and in front of our known, but that's about it. So, I've done it as a candidate, I've done it as a city planner, or urban planner, now I'm doing it as a citizen, because I'm tired of seeing cars crash into buildings, because, whether it's potholes, or because they're racing, we don't have anybody talking to the people, or talking to the citizens about, you know, what can we do? We talk about two-way traffic studies, but that takes years, and we know it's gonna take more years. So to throw it into people's faces and say that, we have this study coming down the lane, I'm not directing any to anybody, but it's the government that we have, and I wanna make sure that we are working with the government, and making sure that we are holding people accountable as well, but also bringing progressive ideas, and bringing solutions to the table as well. So, with that being said, I'd like to see if we'd be able to talk about a Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, or other things that we could do with the Traffic Commission as well. Again, department heads should be involved as also, so making sure that all parties are included. So, I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, no, thank you, Jimmy. I mean, we, as a council, could, relative to a commission, I mean, we can't appoint, but we could draft legislation that would become an ordinance, put it on the books, and then ask the mayor to follow that through. In terms of traffic and people, you know, smashing into buildings, Mr. Yancy was killed on Belmont Street, unsolved murder, hit and run, he's just coming on a break from, from the supermarket. At that time, the city council, we attempted to lower the speed limit on that street, and we were told by the state, no, you, you, no, it's a, it's a state highway, we're not gonna do that. I concur with you, I mean, we need to figure out collectively, everybody, how to make Brockton roads safer, and it comes with investing some money in it. I mean, there's certain areas of the Brockton right now, Copeland Street was just partially repaved, I mean, there's certain areas that need to have, you know, number one priorities, and then others not. But at the end of the day, it's, it's safety, and making sure that your kids can ride their bikes. So, that's a good suggestion, and I think we can take it as a, as a city council, and go back to the ordinance committee and work on it. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you. I yield my time. Thank you.
I have a simple question to ask. Why was it necessary to hire a police spokesman, between salary and benefits over $100,000 a year, when you could easily hire and put on two fully-trained, academy-trained patrolmen for less money, or the same amount of money? That always bugged me. You have a police sergeant, former sergeant, Win Farwell, I'm a former police officer in Brockton, too. A shift commander was always available, every shift, the commander would be there if there was any question. Plus, you always had the Enterprise, or any other newspaper, could go right to the log, and read for themselves, any information that you, that they wanted. But to hire a spokesman, when we always did it, for all these years, over $100,000, I'd rather see two trained police officers that we need on the streets, especially today. Thank you.
He said it. Nothing to be said. But, one of, what I just wanna, listen, as I said, nothing to be said. And, what I'm trying to say is that, again, that's not something that we did, that's not something that we created. And one of the reasons why I think a lot of these things happen, especially with the police department, is that there's very little accountability from the police to the city council. We don't have any say, at least yet, on who the, who the police chief is gonna be, or who gets appointed the police chief. And, you notice I said "yet," because we do have some things in the work, that will change some of that. I think, when you, when you're watching TV, and you're watching some issues, for instance, in Boston, the, the police superintendent commanders are always on TV, answering to a crime in the neighborhoods, and things like that. That's something we don't have in Brockton. Because they, honestly, there's no accountability to the govern, the other half of the governing body, and that's something that we need to change. But the rest, as far as the appointment of the position that you're talking about, we had nothing to do with it. It was put in a, in a way where, the option that we were given is basically zero. We couldn't even cut the position from the budget. All we could do is cut that amount of money from the budget, but it doesn't guarantee that the position was gonna be funded to begin with. So, we did what we thought we could do, but that's something that the administrator of the city did, and he should answer for, you know? But, one of the things that we have coming up very soon, I hope with the support from my colleagues, is that we're gonna change some ordinances in the city, to change some accountabilities in how departments, department heads are appointed in this community. And if they're gonna be department heads, then they need to go through the whole process like everybody else. And I'm, I'm gonna count on my, on my folks here, to basically support that process, before we even go further with this, so that there's not a great deal of fighting and discussions amongst ourselves, because we tend to do that as well, you know? And, and I think we owe it to the, to the taxpayers in this community, to kinda work at some things that are beneficial to the people in this community. And don't thank anybody for asking the right question.
Well, I'm gonna do exactly what you said, 'cause, as in, I'd like to do official myself, I think we can do whatever the people want us to do. But in regard to your questions, I think that, we were put in a situation where we couldn't really do anything, and we got to, what are you on that, we want the position on that. But what happened was, I believe it was included to the Police Supervisor Union that was plugged into it, and I myself was actually one of the vote that they were waiting for. And when I spoke with a few people, and I think I spoke with the city solicitor, his statement was that, if we voted against it, we would have to go through arbitration, I mean, arbitration, and that would have cost the city more money. Because, I feel like, given the situation that we were put into, it was kinda like necessary. But one of the things that I can tell you now, that I was not, that I was not, and I'm not happy with, was the fact that, I spoke with a few people about that, and the administration stated that, what I said, in order for me to vote for a position like that, he or she must speak another language. And I happened to find out that, the person that we gave this job to, couldn't speak anything else but link, but English. So although we were put in a situation where we couldn't do anything, you know, I'm happy the fact that you are not happy about that position. But it's not something that we solely said we were gonna do. So we were put into a situation where we had to do what we have to do. But I hope, like Council Moses said, when it's come down to making those decisions, especially appointment, as you know, we do not have any power whatsoever to appoint people in the city. We can make some recommendations, but I hope there will be a moment when we will be able, not only to appoint, but to appoint the best people to this position, so you, as somebody who served the city perfectly well, can truly satisfy about your service, and those who are services right now. Thank you so much for taking the time, not only to come here, but also to ask that question, sir.
Dennis Ferci, school teacher. Is the mic just working? All right, Dennis Ferci, school teacher, taxpayer in the city of Brockton. I, I want, before I ask my question, I want...
The people mic, it's not a regular mic.
Got you, okay? I have, I have two thank yous, first of all, before I ask the question to the whole council. The first thank you is, last time I spoke in front of you people, I praised Brockton High School, Moses, you talked about the poor image of the city, and I said Brockton High School's the best high school east of the Mississippi, and I still feel that way. I just wanna say thank you to the kids, for last Friday, Saturday night, for putting on one of the most incredible musical performances ever. You had to see it to believe it, people, it was really unbelievable. The, the next person I wanna thank is Win Farwell, for exposing what Bar Mays didn't give the city council, on his $250,000 request, that would've ended up costing the city $793,000. I think Bar Mays gotta be a little bit more upfront with the city council on a lot of issues, because it's not right, and it's not fair. And I wanna thank the five city councils who didn't take the bait. Moses Rodriguez, Robert Sullivan, Win Farwell, Ann Borigaden, and Susan Acastro. I gotta thank you five, because if they, if the vote had been the other way, we would've been stuck with that $793,000 right now. Now, my question to you is, we have something very big happening June 3 in Brockton. That's the class action lawsuit against the city of Brockton. It's gonna be held at the courthouse, the Superior Courthouse. Now, this is a very big issue, because as you know, Russell Lopes won in front of the MCAD. He then, and the city of Brockton wouldn't pay. Then, he won in a court of law in front of a jury trial. They awarded him $4.3 million. We have not addressed it at all. I was hoping the city council would've addressed it by now. Now, I know you know, you gotta go into executive session, but right now, you have to realize that it goes up 5% a year, there's an interest on that. Also, Phil Nazarella has had an open checkbook on this, and that's not right. There's gotta be a time when the city council says, stop, pay them in, okay? Because if not, this is gonna go on and on and on and on. You're gonna have bills like, like crazy. And I'm also hearing, and I hope this isn't true, okay, that the Brockton Rocks owes the city money, and they're gonna be allowed to open up, before they pay the city the money they owe them for electric, sewer, water? Come on. If we didn't pay our electric, sewer, or water, we would, it'd be shut off, believe me. And eventually, we'd be brought to court. So, I hope that, that the Rocks are gonna pay their bill before they're allowed to open up, and I hope you people address this Russell Lopes case, because $4.3 million is a lot of money. It's a lot of money. But I have to say something now, Russell deserves it for what the city put him through. Thank you.
Let me, well, let me just say one thing, and then I'll share the microphone with the, with Council Sullivan. I just wanna make sure that you know that we are looking into this, but we can't discuss this publicly, because we can't really comment on ongoing litigation. Believe it or not, the litigation is against the city of Brockton and its governors, which we are as well. So we can't at least comment on that publicly, but all I can tell you is that, we have something in the works to address some of these issues.
And Dennis, from a legal perspective, the, the only one that can settle a lawsuit against the city of Brockton is the mayor of the city of Brockton. The city council doesn't have the authority to settle lawsuits. We just can't, it doesn't, it's not within our auspices. It's a pending matter. Moses is right, we, we've had some due diligence and discussions on it, but we can't get into it. Relative to the Brockton Rocks, I, I agree with you 100, 100,000 percent. They owe a lot of money, Win's done a lot of homework on that, there's a resolve relative to B-21 Brockton, 21st Century, they've asked, the legal council's asked for time, Win is granted, as a professional that he is, and we, we, as an 11-member board, are really looking into that, 'cause they've taken advantage of the city of Brockton, they really have.
And next up, we have a young lady.
Hi, my name is Vanessa. I am starting a cultivation in Brockton, and I'm, just have a question and a comment. I'm in economic empowerment, and I was wondering, why wasn't there a social equity program in place in Brockton for economic empowerment? And then, with the social consumption that is coming up in Brockton, I was wondering if you guys were thinking about doing a social equity program within, for the new regulation that's coming up?
Great question.
Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm gonna confess, I know a little bit about the social empowerment issue. My understanding is, if I'm right, didn't the CCC just vote that they would give minority applicants preference, first preference for licensing?
Yeah, that's the state level, but there's cities all over Massachusetts that have their own social equity program in place, for people who are...
Won't that mean that you'll come down to us first, though? In other words, if you, once, once you go through the CCC, Cannabis Control Commission, then that would put you first in line to come to the city, and apply for a license here? 'Cause you'd be ahead of everyone else.
That's what I put my app, well, it's, no, for cities, they, for, to get a host agreement, they have a, their own little program for social equity, like, people who are not as financially stable, they have programs for them. Like Boston, they have a social equity program where, if you fit in a certain criteria, it's a one-for-one. So for every economic empowerment, there's a regular person that wants to get a host agreement, they do it that. Or like, so, just like in Somerville, or in Worcester, they have their own social equity programs. So I was just wondering, when it came to the regulations that were put in place in February, just like how medical had their own priority, why wasn't there something for economic empowerment? Or, just a program in place for people who want to get into the marijuana industry, but don't necessarily have the funds or the connections to do it?
Okay.
'Cause I, I went through loopholes to get my host agreement, like, a lot. And, compared to if I went to Boston, it would've been a tad bit more easier than what I did in Brockton.
Have you been successful to get a host community agreement here?
In Brockton, I'm in the process of getting it.
Okay. Are you the young lady that...
Yes.
Kinda got turned away the first time? Okay. This is not a criticism of the mayor, this is an observation. The mayor is the one who executes host community agreements. You have to have a host community agreement. That's an agreement between the, the chief elected official, or the board of selectmen in the community in which you're going to locate, in order to proceed to the Cannabis Control Commission. We, as a council, did not even know that the mayor was reviewing potential host community agreements. It was ongoing before we even finished the zoning portion of, of our work. So, both business regulations and zoning, so, there was no notice in the paper that if you would like a host community agreement, you have between this state and this state to submit your paperwork to the mayor for consideration. I don't understand that. I would think that, given all of the publicity, and all of the discussion about marijuana, it would've been one of the most open, transparent processes that you would ever see. For my part, I favor having local people get the licenses, with local people being employed. I'm not interested in... I'm not interested in people coming from out of state, with a lot of money, and coming into the city, and deciding they're gonna set up an operation. It, it seems to me, this is a new industry, it should be beneficial to the city, and it ought to be beneficial to the people who, to live in the city and contribute to the vitality of Brockton. So, I will admit, I'm gonna have to do a little more research in that, you've piqued my curiosity. I do hope you're successful...
Thank you.
...working things out with your legal counsel in the city. Sometimes you can fight City Hall and win.
Sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, just to make it clear again, so there's, there's eight places that are gonna come, but there's two already grandfathered in, which are on West Chestnut and Dennis Ianary's Ward 3. That's the, the medical marijuana, they've been there for some time, but they automatically qualify to get the two. So there's gonna be six plus the two. What we've been told is that, there's already been 10 signed host agreements. I, I... I, I can't figure out the math on that. If there's can only be eight, there's 10. Um, and potentially this individual would be number 11. But, again, we, we didn't have any say on the host agreement and, uh, unfortunately, cultivation, right. But, you know, we'll just have to see how that pans out.
I mean, I think that, uh, the whole thing was, there was a lack of transparency in regard to the whole thing. Like, like Winfarrow said, um, I don't think anybody knew, uh, was gonna receive those host community agreement. And I, and I strongly believe that. Um, it shouldn't be like that. I think everybody should've been able to apply. You are not the first one who actually have this kind of issue. But in terms of that, social equity, I think it's a wonderful thing, but I don't think it was part of that ordinance that was voted on. But I think it's a wonderful thing that we can, um, think about in terms of, like, bringing to Brockton. But here's what I would like to say. Yes, I would like to see the people that live within the city benefit from what we are doing here, as opposed to some people from wherever they come from and get connection and get whatever they want. So I think that lack of transparency is something that I would like you folks to pay attention to. Because when it's come down to something major, major like that, you folks should've been able to be able to come and talk in terms of, like, whether or not you wanted. As we speak, I got a call from a lady who believed that there will be a pot shop beside his business where he's having, I think, a daycare. And she's worried about bringing kids and at the same times seeing marijuana. Um, I call it ganja. I think that's the best way for me to pronounce that word. But I think that, like of transparency, it's somebody, it's something that I'm not happy about it and I will never be, be happy about it. And as you, I mean, I think you and I had a conversation before in regard to you being churning away from City Hall in terms of, like, trying to find information about this. And also, as we speak, I know some lady who lives on West Salem Street. She said that she went to City Hall at least four or five different times. And she was told that nothing was going on. And when she went for the seventh time, she said that everything was over. So I think the residents of Brockton deserve better. And we, as the legislative branch, policymakers, we do not have any say in regard to, um, the community host agreement. But what we can tell you is that, what's important, we have the power to determine who's gonna get those licenses. That's one thing that you gotta be able to understand. We will make that final call. Although 10 people are in the process of finalizing it, but the 11 of us will be able to vote in terms of, like, who's gonna get that. Although Bob just said it, two people, I mean, two businesses will get it automatically, given the fact that they have been here for a little bit. But the other six, although, I mean, as we speak, there's 10 and potentially there will be, um, a, um, 11 one, but the license will be determined by us. And I think it was Bob and Moses and Winfarrow that made that call to determine, okay, who was gonna be in charge of giving this license, this permit or license away. Just imagine if we did not have that, this control. This thing would've been a mess. But fortunately, giving the folks that we have on the ordinance committee at that time who draft legislation and make sure that you folks will have people who truly understand the complexity of giving those licenses away and make that conclusion. Fortunately, I will be one of them. And we will be able to vote, not only vote for the sake of voting, but voting for the folks that we believe will be able to bring business in Brockton, but also giving back. So I hope, uh, you succeed in the process of getting that, 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 that community host agreement. And if not, you know what? We're gonna be here, we're not gonna go anywhere. But I hope next time we have an issue like that, the resident is able to participate and determine who's gonna get what and when he or she's gonna get it. Thank you.
Uh, I think, I think Win wants the microphone because, uh, we were told that we're only supposed to be here until 8 o'clock and, uh, counselor, you know, my buddy here has taken so much time. No, you can go ahead and ask your question. No, go ahead and ask your question and then, we're gonna pass a hat for, so we can make a collection, so we can pay an extra ten minutes.
Stay a little extra.
You know, the last girl that was speaking wa- was right, uh, as far as, um, the programs that are available, um, for this industry. The industry's huge. The sta, the state says it's gonna be, uh, uh, $1.2 billion once it's up and running. City of Brockton, uh, should be taking in a lot of money once it's up and running. What other cities, um, are doing are, they're putting, um, a cannabis commissioner in their town, or a cannabis czar, you know? Someone that can take and work between the, the, um, council and the mayor's office. So that way, e- every day, there's new postings on the cannabis site, you know? And the council and the mayor, no one keeps up with it. And no one knows what's available to us. We, kinda, the city needs somebody to take charge. Someone that the industry can go to, someone to help us, you know? Just to get through it quicker. The quicker we get through it, the quicker the money comes into the city.
Now, you know I have a crazy sense of humor. Would that be the High Commissioner by any chance? I just thought I'd ask.
Call it as you like. But, but it's a great position and it would, and, and what it would do is the city would be prepared. The, uh, you know, w- we're kinda missing out on a lot of stuff just because we're mov- moving kinda slow on it. But if, um, someone would work with the people trying to get into the industry. And, and that's why you haven't heard from anyone yet. It's really tough to get through the city. No one has answers. The police department don't, the fire department, no one knows anything.
You're right.
There were ordinances put on, on the list and no one has taken control of being in charge of that ordinance. And there's no one to find someone to do it. We kinda need someone to take charge.
Point's well taken. And, all right, it's, it's 8:15, so I'm gonna kinda do a wrap-up. The reason we enjoy this is, we don't like politicians that show up every two years when they want something. I think it's important to listen to different points of view. I think it's important to listen to the gentleman out back who has some passionate beliefs. I think it's important to listen to people who offer comments, criticisms, suggestions. Uh, that is part of politics. I will say this, I blame the Congress and I blame multiple presidents for putting us in the position of having immigration issues still fomenting around this country. It goes way back to Reagan, it goes to George H.W. Bush, President Clinton, President Obama. It's not a city issue. We need to be focused on accountability here and how we spend our money, getting safe streets, repairing roads, having our schools be the best they can be, and ensuring that the quality of life for our residents is exactly what it should be. So, we will hold another one of these in about three months. Uh, I'm not quite sure where it will be, but everyone is always welcome to come and we are sincerely honored to serve you. Um, you're the whole reason we do this. It's, it's, there are very, other few rewards, other than making new friends and listening to people and learning from, from people who attend these meetings. So, I thank you very much and we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. All right, Gary, you wanna close it up?
Win, I just had one question. Um, I, I'm not sure if it was a city council meeting or an ordinance committee meeting, but you had brought up the subject about the donations to be made, the charitable, under the cannabis companies here. Um, I, I called a few of these charities that I'd like to make these contributions to, seeing that I had two host agreements delivered to me for cultivation and manufacturing. So I called up the institution who I'd like to make the donation to, which is a renowned place here in the city of Brockton, without mentioning their name. And they told me they couldn't take anything, um, from their board of directors, their bylaws, um, from cannabis or anything drug-related, uh, even though they know that cannabis now is becoming a medical miracle to a lot of things. Um, and they'd love to take my money, uh, $25,000 each year for three years, um, but they can't, uh, directly from my company. So you talked about the council maybe, uh, setting up some sort of funding, um, some sort of account that we could donate to, that you could distribute this money without it going into the general fund, where it could be distributed at the mayor's discretion, or, or the council's discretion, whatever discretion that is out there. But I'd like to be able to have somebody that I could depend on, that the money that we do donate go to the charitable organizations that we wanted to go to. That's basically what I wanted to know.
Gary, I'm not exactly sure what nonprofit organization you're talking about, but there's...
It's Teen Challenge.
There's about, probably a thousand nonprofit organizations in Brockton and I'm sure somebody will be very happy to take your funds if you're willing to donate the funds. Uh, if one group isn't doing it, there's plenty more that provides, you know, jobs for kids and some programming for other kids and, uh, a variety of stuff. So I can't imagine an organization in the city, I mean, if they have it in their mission not to do anything to do with, you know, with cannabis, whatever, drug issues or whatever, it's one thing, but there's plenty of organizations in the city that we're willing to take your funds.
I just had a long...
I can guarantee you that one.
I'm sure. But I've had a long, uh, working relationship with Teen Challenge. Um, their students were my employees over at the Camp Hill Keith Oil Company for over 35 years and I'd like to keep that relationship going. They do a lot of good...
I understand that, but if it's, if it's, if it's in their mission not to do that or through, uh, you know, their works and stuff, not to do that, form relationships with other organizations in this community.
Well, again, uh, they're base, basically, out of Connecticut. They have six other locations and their board of directors are not from Massachusetts.
Yeah.
But the Teen Challenge branch that I would wanna donate to would be the Brockton branch.
Yep.
The people in Connecticut are not familiar with the industry here. They haven't educated themselves. It hasn't been brought up in their state. Um, so therefore, they're not really knowledgeable about, you know, how this really works. But again, um, if it was all possible that I could know that an organization, because I have to, by my commitment, um, to the mayor, uh, when I received my host agreement, that I would donate the $25,000 each year to this organization. He was all aboard on that. Now I find out that I have to deviate from my original plan, but do I really have to? And again, Win, you brought up about, maybe talk about some sort of pool that this organize, that cannabis industry people could donate to, which I'd be more than willing to do and love to do and probably would do more than the $25,000. Um, but again, I don't have that avenue yet and I didn't know if that discussion just fell by the boards. Are you still discussing, discussing it, or... That's all I really wanted to know. Uh, would you discuss it?
We will, Gary, definitely. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I, first of all, I wanna thank Brockton Community Axis for filming this tonight. I wanna thank, again, Sandy Proctor, the residents, the Sullivan Towers, the Housing Authority, and everybody that came out tonight. Uh, it was a spirited discussion, absolutely. We don't always agree on everything. And if I was talking too loud, I do, I do apologize. My wife says I talk loud, so maybe I do. Uh, but again, on behalf of Gene, uh, the President Moses, myself, and Win, thank you and we'll see you again. Have a good evening. Thank you.